...the city council to be held in the sixth floor conference room, 801 Crawford Street, 6:00 PM, Monday, November 24th, 2014, for the purpose of a public work session. In addition, you may consider motioning to go into closed meeting by order of the mayor. Mr. Cherry?
Here.
Mr. Edmonds?
Here.
Mr. Meeks? Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Simmons?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Yes.
Mayor Wright?
Here.
Mr. Rowe?
Ladies and gentlemen, we've got four items on the work session, or just first is the zoning ordinance amendment. At the last work session, we went through and you gave us feedback. You decided to amend some, eliminate some. I sent you a memo for your E's of reference. It's for you. And wanted to make sure that we got it right. We picked up all the comments that you had. Again, remember, you can hear the options. You can approve them all as is. You can approve some, deny some. You can amend them up until the point of adoption. As long as the amendment is germane to the matter that's being amended in the ordinance. Elizabeth called me today with a question, whether or not our zoning ordinance allowed for port activities. It doesn't mention that. So we need to come back and amend that, and we'll put that on the fast track. Seems kind of strange that port is part of our name, and we want to do the port city future, but our two-year-old zoning ordinance doesn't have that definition. It has croc depots, and that's essentially the war side activity. Anyway, I wanted to let you know, you saw some email correspondence on that today. Bob, do you have anything? This will be on first reading tomorrow night.
Thank you for doing this, because this is fabulous. And I think you're, for me, your description of the changes to the two items was exactly on target.
I've got a little heartburn, and maybe Bob can clarify that on some of the proposed changes to the construction equipment definitions there. Construction as well as recreational equipment, and how it's going to impact people in our city that have acreage and have some equipment that could be defined as commercial equipment.
Sure. Good evening. Good to see everyone tonight, and then happy Thanksgiving to everyone in advance.
Same to you.
I'll just mention that the, there's been some concern, I think, raised about that provision in the ordinance. A lot of it is what's already in the code, you know, so that some of those issues related, for example, to recreation equipment, that's already in the code. The thing we were talking about amending is adding in some definitions restricting the locating of construction equipment. When we were discussing construction equipment, we're not talking about riding lawnmowers and things for new landscape maintenance, that kind of thing. We're talking about construction equipment that you might be parking at your house. By that, we talk about backhoes, front-end loaders, things of that nature that we don't think would be appropriate. We're fairly silent on those types of equipment. And what we were just proposing is that that's not really an appropriate use in a residential area to have people bring it to that level, unless they're working on site, working at the house, or working in a subdivision. But just bringing home heavy equipment, keeping it parked in your residence. So just, we have a lot of small lots, some very small parcels in town, and a lot of this equipment is just simply not suitable.
Have we had a lot of complaints?
We get a fair number. I think Fred's working on one right now in Cavalier Manor, where we do get...
A lot, or a few?
Depends on what you consider. More than, I don't know how many. Fred answered the question on how many. Usually get one or two complaints a month on the large, you know, the commercial equipment. And we're talking, the one we have that Bob mentioned, there's a bulldozer, a backhoe, two trailers, and a front-end loader on a lot in Cavalier Manor. And it's, the whole yard is full of construction equipment. And that's what he said, six, seven thousand square foot lot, when you have that amount of equipment in it, is not conducive to being a neighborhood activity.
Well, we're not talking about tow trucks and things like that. We're talking about equipment. Equipment. Untitled, UCC filed equipment.
And major recreational equipment. My problem is with some of the terms, major. You know, major to me might be different than major to you, or major to somebody else here. What's the definition?
The definition that deals with major looks at the weight of the vehicle and the number of axles.
That's true.
And what we do is...
Why can't we describe it as such?
The construction equipment is...
No, I'm talking about recreational.
We do.
I didn't see it in the change here. Bob, can you help?
I don't have that section code with me, though, on the recreational.
And the thing with the recreational equipment that we do, since it was unregulated prior to 2010, we do have aerial photography that existed prior to 2010, and of course, after 2010. Prior to issuing a notice, or even going out to a site, we do check those aerial photographs. If the boat, the trailer, the RV was at that site and parked on a paved surface that all vehicles were supposed to be parked on, then we would list that as a non-conforming site. If it's a trailer or a RV that can't get to the backyard, then the code does make a provision that says if it's unavailable to get to the rear yard, then it would be allowed to be parked in front of the building. So we've made those provisions to look at existing structures, existing buildings, and existing uses. That's already existing in the code.
Okay.
Very good.
Good.
You know, the question's on this? We're good with it. We're good.
Okay, it's on your agenda tomorrow night for the first reading. Cherry, after that, it'll be on your December meeting, your second read.
Very good.
All right. The next item is a update on the legislative package. At the last council meeting, we went through that, and council asked that we add the charter amendment. That's been done. You have the notice that Deborah had prepared that public hearing is scheduled for your December 9th meeting. In addition, since the last meeting, several members of council asked that a policy statement on casino gambling be included in the package. And this is the statement that was in last year's package, or any resolution. But we're on track to have the public hearing on the night. After you have that public hearing, you can officially adopt your...
Okay.
Okay. The next item is a briefing on a project that the city has been working on for a couple weeks, for a period of time. And it gives us bragging rights. And it's on making our city walkable and a bike-friendly city.
I want to say, I think the bike trail thing is a positive. Hey, healthy Portsmouth, right, Mayor?
That's right.
He's a great saying wouldn't posit.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Happy Thanksgiving. So I'm here tonight to brief you up on some efforts that we've been working on in the planning department for a little less than the last year, as far as actually getting going. Where we all started was in 2010, we adopted our master transportation plan that had really been a public involvement effort that started, I believe it was around 2008 intensive involvement in 2009, and then finally adopted by you all in January 2010. And so our master transportation plan has a multimodal focus, meaning that we are focused on balancing transportation facilities citywide. So what does that really mean? It means we've been adding bike lanes, filling in sidewalk gaps, and adding pedestrian facilities at both signalized and unsignalized intersections. Since 2010, when the plan was adopted, we've added 6.3 miles of bike lanes, over 120 bike parking spots, nearly 4,000 feet of sidewalk, and well over 50 intersection crosswalks. We've made multimodal improvements to every one of our multimodal roadways that are identified in the plan. So one of the actions included in the master transportation plan is to pursue bicycle-friendly community designation from the League of American Bicyclists. They're a national organization with a mission of promoting bicycling for fun, fitness, and transportation through advocacy and education. In a nutshell, bicycle-friendly community is one that encourages people to bike for transportation and recreation. Why is it important to promote biking, especially something that's as simple as a bicycle? Because biking provides numerous benefits to communities and their residents. Main reasons that we should spend our energy promoting biking include public health, traffic congestion, quality of life, and economic development. Lots of studies have been completed and statistics gathered that show biking is good for us, easing what ails us and reducing our risk for other ailments. The public health benefits of biking should seem familiar to you with Dr. Chang's presentation on the community health assessment recently. So here are some thoughts. Lifestyle physical activity like biking for transportation is effective as a structured exercise program in improving physical activity, cardio-respiratory fitness, blood pressure, and other ailments. Over time, people who commute by bike, excuse me, who commute by car daily tend to gain more weight than those who do not, even if they're physically active at other times. Active commuting that incorporates biking and walking is associated with an overall 11% reduction in cardiovascular risk. And if you ask about safety, the health benefits of cycling actually outweigh the safety risk by a factor of 20 to 1. So as far as traffic congestion, in 2008, the number of miles Americans drove declined by 3%, just 3%. In that same year, traffic congestion dropped 30%. Cities with high biking rates tend to have lower crash rates for all road users. About 44% of peak hour trips are actually not work-related trips or actual work trips themselves. There are errands that are being ran less than two miles, in a less than two-mile range from the house, and that means that it was a trip that could have been taken by bike. And parents say they drive their kids to school because there's too much traffic, and they don't feel it's safe for them to bike and walk. Yet, parents taking their kids to school make up over 10% of that non-commuting trip traffic that occurs during peak hour. And even the National Association of Realtors has figured out that people want better access to walking and biking opportunities. As far as economic development, there's tons of benefits as well. And big businesses have actually gotten it. They realize that being bike-friendly is a business attractor. They realize that young people are getting their driver's license later, and then previous generations, and that they want multimodal options, want to live close to work, and want to live downtown. You can see here, there's a list of tons of economic benefits about biking. There's numerous benefits, including the cycling enlivens main streets, bicycle-friendly districts attract tourists, trips are short trips, which means that if you're on a bike, you're going to buy local because you're traveling local. And there's a strong connection between human scale, speed, and businesses. People tend to notice businesses when they're traveling by either walking or biking. So, all right, this is it. To the chase, we were named a bike-friendly community in May 2014. And Mr. Rowe asked me, how come we just got named bronze? And I guess he felt that that wasn't good enough, but I was really excited about it. But here's some stats for you all. So we are, state of Virginia ranks in number 18 as far as state rankings of being a bicycle-friendly community, or, excuse me, being a bicycle-friendly state. There are actually over 300 bicycle-friendly communities across the 50 states, and we are only one of nine in the state of Virginia to be named a bicycle-friendly community. There are three that are silver-level communities within the state, and those are Alexandria, Arlington, and Charlottesville. The other are bronze-level communities like us, and they are Harrisburg, Ruston, Richmond, Roanoke, and Williamsburg. That didn't hear any Hampton Road cities, did you?
That's right.
I think that's pretty good company. We're the first. So this is, this was very exciting for me when I found that out. We have bragging rights. So we, these, I mean, these were very, this was a very rigorous application. We were asked all sorts of questions that weren't just yes or no questions. They wanted to know how we educated our drivers and cyclists, how we teach our children about safe cycling skills, street sweeping schedules, because that has to do with the safety of a cyclist, not hitting debris when they're riding along. And what's the speed limit on our roadways, because that really impacts how safe you feel as a cyclist on the road. So we were selected and evaluated based on five different categories: education enforcement, encouragement, engineering, and evaluation. Those are commonly called the five E's. And what we found out is that we're actually not doing too bad, and we had a lot more than we thought we did as far as assets and strengths in these categories. Safety Town, Public Service Announcements, and Healthy Portsmouth have all been critical to educating people on safe cycling and promoting bikes. The police department with their traffic unit and neat officers have been very helpful to promoting cycling. The Fourth of July Bike Parade in the Kradda community is a hit, and it's known for being a bike parade for children. The Team Portsmouth, led by John Mayer, is huge as far as encouragement for engineering, bike lanes, bike racks that have been installed on High Street and around the ferries, as well as project piggybacking, like utility projects. Thank you, Mr. Foster. And evaluation, we've been working on implementing our goals. That's one of the criteria that we are evaluated on, as well as the traffic program that's actually operated through HRT to get people to use a different mode of travel to reach their destinations. So this is just a picture I threw in from an event in Port Norfolk a few years ago that was called Get Off Your Hide and Ride. It was an inaugural bicycle rodeo of it in that neighborhood, and it was a huge hit. Switching gears a little bit, we decided to pursue what was called a walk-friendly community designation. This designation wasn't included in one of the recommendations in the transportation plan, simply because it wasn't around back in 2009, when the plan was written. But because of, we felt like we had made great strides improving both walking and bicycling citywide, we decided to go big or go home and try to get two designations in one year. And so we, as soon as we got done with our bike-friendly designation, we put that aside and focused on our walk-friendly application. And we thought we had a strong case, because we had been spending the last few years implementing a lot of the recommendations that were included in the plan. So we were asked lots of questions. Again, this was a rigorous application that came through a different group than the bike-friendly designation. But we were asked things that you would typically think of when you think about walkability, like site design and street design. But then there's also very important things, such as historic preservation, gateways, and public art, that are very important to walkability, to create a walking environment that is going to attract people. September 30th, again, we were only named bronze level, but we were named a bike friendly, or, excuse me, a walk-friendly community. And this is actually the plaque that we received for this. And so right now, we are only one of four communities in Virginia to have this designation, and you can see where our company is. And so this is pretty exciting for us. Again, first in Hampton Roads. And let me just tell you, both of these designations have actually gotten the planning departments of the other cities in this area talking. I'm not quoting anyone, but they're wondering, if Portsmouth, why not us? If Portsmouth can do this, why aren't we doing it? And on the bike-friendly status, I know that Virginia Beach pursued that probably about 10 years ago now, and they actually only received honorable mention. This was our first time applying for both of these designations. So it was a great feat for us to get bronze level, even though it is just bronze level.
It's the bronze.
We got to start somewhere.
Yeah, we got to start somewhere. We could have started at honorable mention, but we did not. They wouldn't have given us a plaque or any designations, official designations, if we had gotten that. Come on, guys. So why promote walking? It's a lot of the same things that you saw up for the bicycling, public health, quality of life, economic development. And I think James is relieved that I can't make a traffic congestion connection from walking to car travel, but I couldn't make any successful arguments on that. But as you can see, there's the same benefits that come from riding a bike also apply to walking. I'm sure the mayor actually could have gotten up here and done this part of my presentation. Quality of life, these are really important. These are what you think about, what is the community, and how you are a part of your community. If you're walking, if you're biking, you're seeing things on a human scale, you're getting freedom, focus, you've got a sense of place, you're the eyes on the street, you're establishing choices how you want to get to and from places. Who has seen me ride around the city in my green bike helmet? See, there's lots of you guys. The first picture that was on, I chose not to be on the cover of the presentation, so you got a gentleman in spandex, but this is not what we're promoting. We're promoting just, you know, you guys stepping outside and walking home, or biking home, and whatever attire that you've gotten, what you've got on. Economic development, I'm trying to push this because, you know, I really think there's a huge connection. Studies show there's tons of connection between having a sense of place, which you get from walking and biking, and what businesses want to come to your community because they realize that there actually is a sense of community. These are some before and afters, because every transit rider is a pedestrian at some point along their trip. They need safe facilities and connections to get around to the bus stops. And especially here in Portsmouth, where nearly 20% of our households don't have access to a car, you need to provide safe facilities for people to get where they need to go. So this stop is along George Washington Highway, in front of the Save-A-Lot Shopping Center that includes a grocery store, of course, and across the street from an apartment complex. There were no ADA ramps across the street. There was a crosswalk, but it was not our current design, nor were there any sidewalks alongside the bus stop. So that was how it used to look. We came in, we worked with HRT to get an enhanced bus shelter put through there, but the city did the rest. We put in, excuse me, new ADA ramps. We put in wider sidewalks than we needed to, because we know that this is a very heavily traveled corridor. This is just another angle of it before and after. And some more photos. So this was like our signature project, the one we really like to point to as far as establishing pedestrian connections. So just kind of winding down a little bit, what stands out from these applications? We get feedback from both the League of American Bicyclists and the Pedestrian and Bicycle Information Center, who give out these designations. But as we were going through our application process, we started identifying where our strengths and weaknesses were. Hopefully, you guys know that Safety Town is a huge asset to the city of Portsmouth. Norfolk took theirs down a few years ago for, I believe it was an expansion of the zoo, and they were trying to look for a place to put theirs up again. The consultant that helped me gather a lot of this information, she is from Ireland, and she had a Safety Town when she was a child in Ireland, but she doesn't, you don't see them here in America, and I had never seen one, never even heard of one until I moved up here. But it's a huge asset. It was a huge integral part of both of our applications, because all Portsmouth public schoolchildren go through the program. Public art enhances walkability throughout the city. We've had a lot of public art installations go in in the last couple of years, and they just, they bring tourism, they bring people on the street over and over, even if they are residents. Boaters love Portsmouth. This was very, very interesting in our bike application. Nearly a quarter of the boaters that come to the city of Portsmouth come here over and over with folding bikes, because unlike a lot of other cities that during the '70s and '80s development, we did not put a highway to separate our water from our downtown. So boaters come here again because they've got folding bikes, which are bikes that can collapse small and fit on their boats. They park here, they unfold their bikes, they ride to the restaurants and businesses down on High Street, and they also ride to the Food Lion, because it is relatively close. It's less, I live in Shea Terrace, and to get from my house to City Hall is 2.2 miles. So to get from the Marina to Food Lion, it's probably, you know, right under two miles. That is easy biking distance. Thankfully for us, history works in our favor. We've got a great street network that we haven't ruined. It's basically very, very intact, and that makes traveling options a lot easier. And we've also kept our history, and so that works on tourism, works for walkability. Our schools are our partners. They've been a great help in putting a lot of this data and information together. These applications were very, very data-intensive. Police Department plays many roles. They've been very helpful working on the application with us, but then also doing education and enforcement. And as a transportation planner for the city, I got to say, ferry is huge to commuters. I know a lot of people that live here in Portsmouth, and either walk to the ferry and take the ferry every day to go to jobs in Norfolk, or people that actually live out in Churchland that will bike downtown and take the ferry over to Norfolk every day. So we've got some things to do. These are just some things that I pulled from both applications, some feedback. An open streets event, I think we've, we're heading in that direction. That's just where you close your downtown streets to vehicle traffic and let people come out on foot, on bike, whatever, and just have a day, it's kind of like a day of play. But we really need to establish a bicycle pedestrian advisory committee. All this was done through people from different departments who were able to give me information. But a lot of the stuff that gets done, gets done through me, and it would be great to have an advisory committee that kind of steers where the next projects go. We have been recommended to evaluate our signal timings, to look and see if there's ways that we can make improvements that'll make it a little bit easier for pedestrians, especially in the downtown area. Target enforcement in high areas of bicycle pedestrian use, just to make sure that not just motorists, but also walkers and bikers are adhering to the law as far as travel. An established account program, we've got some very sparse numbers as far as downtown intersections, as who's biking and walking, but, you know, everything is a better sell when you've got more data. And right now, we're lacking a lot of data. So we've completed plans for additional eight miles of bike facilities. We've got funding for our Rail to Trail in Churchland. We've got funding coming up for Bicycle Boulevard in West Haven. We'd like to brand our bicycle efforts, Pedal Portsmouth. We think that that can help us build momentum behind our efforts. New sidewalks, or, excuse me, signage along the seawall, because you guys changed the city ordinance quite a few months ago now to allow bicyclists along the seawall. And Housewoman Simmons pointed out that some of our signage out there is actually outdated. I've done an inventory, but I've still got work to do on that. And with the Department of Neighborhood Advancement, we need to work on creating walkability and enhancing walkability in our neighborhoods, and also work on continuing and filling our sidewalks citywide. So this is just a chat of the Rail to Trail project. And remind you guys that this is 1.8 mile project within the Churchland area. This, on the local, excuse me, on the regional scale, this is called the Southampton Roads Trail. But on the statewide effort, there's actually a designated trail called the Beaches to Bluegrass. It starts out in the western part of the state and runs through Portsmouth before ending in Virginia Beach, and that is actually on the same alignment as the Southampton Roads Trail. Trail. But then there's also a national effort to have a spur of the US-76 bike route. Right now, that bike route goes from Astoria, Oregon, to Yorktown. And if you're riding your bicycle from one coast to the other, you want to dip your wheels in the ocean, and Yorktown isn't the ocean. And so a lot of people actually do continue that ride and come through our area, but it's not designated. And so we would like to actually get that trail designated. It's going to increase tourism around here, which means more money. Thank you. If you guys have any questions.
Good job, Susan.
Beautiful presentation.
Great work.
So this is our walk-friendly sign, and we've got two road signs that we have not put up yet for our bicycle-friendly community designation. The nice thing you can learn, Mr. Rowe, is these look like everyone else's. There's no bronze wording on here at all, so we will have the same color sign as all the other cities. These designations, this is good for four years, and the walk-friendly one is good for five years, so we've got work to do. We either...
We're going to start placking those signs up.
Yep.
Susan is, you know, the transportation...
She's on it.
Extraordinary. I see her, you know, every day it's not raining in her cute little green helmet, riding by. She never stops for coffee, she's always on the way to work, because she's pedaling by.
Great job, that's good news.
Good job.
Thank you, Susan.
I love the Pedal Portsmouth, too. That's a good thing.
I could have another connotation.
I got three questions.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, three questions.
Well, three different topics. One, how are we doing with the, are we got rehab going over there or something? I see construction boxes.
Where are we?
Uh, next door.
801.
801.
Yeah.
The police department moves in starting the 3rd of December, which is Monday, the Monday after Thanksgiving.
Okay. The rec center, we're moving along with that.
Yes, sir.
And the third one is, any more change orders on that pipe job?
Not any lately.
Nothing that's not already been approved by council when they adopted your resolution.
The $2 million, okay. Okay. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am?
One more comment since she brought up art, public art. You all know, I have said this before, but I just have to say it again since she just brought it up as part of, you know, why we're bronze. And you all know I just spent almost a week in Philadelphia. And part of the double-decker bus tour I took, and they talked about, and I didn't know supposedly Philadelphia has more public art in the city than any other city in America. And part of that is because they have the 1% rule, which is any building that uses public funds or public infrastructure, 1% of the total is required to be put into a public art fund. Doesn't necessarily have to be art at that location, but...
But they put it into the pot.
It's, you know, the original Love statues there, you know, William Penn's on City Hall, largest statue on a building in America.
They promote the arts.
It's just a great way to generate income for public art.
We're going to get that on that.
Good job.
Thanks for bringing that up.
Okay, anybody else?
Last item. Within the last year, you approved a lease on Elliott Avenue. We sent the lease over to the other party, and they sat on it. And we feel that we need to come back to you and get you to reauthorize the execution of the lease. And so Brandon's going to give you a quick briefing.
Say again, the lease of what?
Elliott Avenue.
Oh, Elliott Avenue.
You remember the athletic field there?
Yeah.
Okay. And you said, move ahead, you approved it, we sent the lease over to the private sector, and they didn't execute it. Probably an oversight on their part, but it's aged out, and so we feel that we need to bring it back to you to get your authorization to execute the lease.
And this is Portsmouth Christian, right?
Yes, sir.
All right, very good.
Thank you, John, that's an excellent summary. Good evening, Mr. Randall.
How you doing?
And council, yes, this is just following on the course that you approved last year. It's just taken it this long for them to execute the lease and get it back to us, and of course, council has to authorize a manager to execute any lease. So just to give you a review, so that when you see this on your agenda tomorrow night, you won't think, wait a minute, we did this already. This is a little less important parcel that's on Elliott Avenue to the right as you're facing Portsmouth Christian School. It's owned by Belmore Baptist Church, which is, you know, the parent organization of the school. The city had a lease with Belmore Baptist Church for 20 years. It started in 1993. It expired in March of last year, 2013, and so that was why in the summer I brought to you a number of options to consider, whether to sell it to the school, to continue the lease, or look at other options. And your direction to me was to go back to the church and to the civic league and get the civic league's input. So we did that. The civic league said, we like the lease arrangement, we like having the condition to be able to access it as a public facility, but that the school can use it for specified times, and we would like you to draft a new lease with those terms. The church said, we're okay with that. And so at your work session in October of last year, 2013, you said, okay, go forward with the lease. So we did that. The city attorney's office drafted the lease, we sent it to them in October of last year, and we just got it back in October of this year. So again, it's...
Reverend Price has been busy.
Yeah, so as it is a lease, it needs council's approval, so it's on your agenda tomorrow night with a recommendation to authorize a manager to execute that lease.
Okay, very good.
Same terms as originally agreed upon.
Yes, ma'am. Except that it's a five-year lease. 20 years ago, I don't know how we entered into a 20-year lease, but we can only legally enter into a five-year...
Five years.
It's a 15, right? It's a five-year lease.
We're doing five with renewal.
Renewal options.
Okay.
All right, very good, thank you. Okay, is that it?
Sir, you have a need for a closed session?
Yeah, we do.
And before we go into that, I asked the manager to give us an update on the disparity study, and we're going to get that next meeting, okay? And anything else? Yes, Ms. Randall, please, take us into closed.
Okay. I move to go into a closed meeting pursuant to the provisions of Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711, for the following purpose: consideration of candidates for appointment to city boards and commissions as permitted under subsection A1. Second.
Okay.
Mr. Cherry?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Meigs?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Simmons?
Yes.
Ms. Randall?
Yes.
They're right.
Yes.